So good evening and welcome here to Fortun Television. And we are here Conglade in Liberia, Lokitown to be precise. You should ask there, Astracamp Conglade. And the Secretary General of the CDC is expected to visit this site. And obviously, you should like parade, or you should talk, I won't let you refer to that. So it's towards in relation to having some consultation, as well as having some words with residents, as well as President, President of the CDC. So the parades are here waiting for the Secretary General, Javasin Kote, who is expected to be a few minutes from now. So we are here bringing you the happiness, as well as stay to share the broadcast, leave your comments. Leave your comments as we, and with the arrival of Javasin Tamakoji. And he's the Secretary General of the CDC. So whatever you have, just stay to share the broadcast. And also you should be remembered by on this day, the Shari'af of November is a Mathias Day for the CDC. And this was the day and some Cidicians were massacred at the ground of the CDC in Conkot Town. But today, it's not happening at the Conkot Town headquarters, but rather at Lokitown, where the Secretary General is expected to speak to some citizens. Mathias Day is about remembering some of their fallen soldiers. Remembering some of their fallen heroes and heroes that got vetted mask during the era of the November 7th, 2011, at the headquarters of the CDC. So in the knowledge history, this happens as happening. So we are here in Lokitown, they are here waiting, and we are Secretary General to continue on this parade. And this conversation as well, so rally to the commemoration of their Mathias Day here in Lokitown. So for us, I guess so. So this is what's happening here, at the ground of the famous Lokitown Cinema. If you are going to this place, this is the junction of Lokitown, where we have the famous cinema, Lokitown Cinema. We are born here in the 80s, 90s, you must have known this place. And they happen here. So the CDC Secretary General, Javasin Tamakoji, is expected to be here to commemorate this happening. So we don't have copyrights to happiness. We don't have copyrights to songs that are played in the background, we don't have copyrights to that. So we don't have copyright, where any song played in the background. A lot is meant for entertainment, as it relates to the happening here at the junction of Lokitown, as we are waiting arrival of the Secretary General of the CDC. So the Secretary General has arrived, and he will join the group, as we continue to move on to the ground of the headquarters here in Lokitown, that's the headquarters of Lokitown, where the entire program will commence. Where the program will commence, and the entire commemoration is happening. So the Secretary General of the CDC has arrived, and he will... So the Secretary General of the CDC, Javasin Tamakoji, has arrived along with his interrash, and the man that did this one, along with a famous Lokitown farmers, I don't even refer to him, say, Stati City farmers, and that's a American cheese, along with some stars of the CDC. They are all here. So as we can see, they see the parade of the visit of the Secretary General of the CDC, Javasin Tamakoji, and his interrash, along with residents of Lokitown community, as he has come to commemorate what they refer to as the Mathias Day. As you may be aware, November 7th, 2011, some Cidicians were massacred at Martin, the early regime. And we, they allegedly show that it was under the expression of former President Salih, that the hard partisan were massacred on the party headquarters of the CDC in here, in Conkot Town. Based upon that, they take this day upon every year to commemorate November 7th as their Mathias Day. So based upon that, so this year commemoration will be done here. It is ongoing with a district number 15, Lokitown to be precise. Where this entire process is ongoing, and they refer to this as the Mathias Day. So the Secretary General, along with his interrash, some stars of the party, has come to commemorate this day within Lokitown. So in Lokitown, they stand out, they are in a numbers, as they come out to commemorate this day. And you can see the streets, the splosh and that, everything is ongoing. As we, I yet to hear the message for today, what will the message be? What will be talked to be said by the Secretary General? We yet to hear from that, but it's this, the Secretary General, Javasin Tamakoji is here, wearing the all over white, along with this white jacket, black hat, and show that. So for us, let's subscribe the program right here. We have to copyright to something in the background. that to be said by the Secretary General, we yet to hear from that. The Secretary General Jefferson Tamakoti is here, wearing the all over white, along with his white jacket, black hat, so that's the message. So as we can see, they see the parade of the descent of the Secretary General of the CDC, of the CDC, the CDC, and his interest along with residents of Lucky Town community, as he has come to commemorate what they refer to as the Mathias Day, as you may remember, where November 7th, 2011, some citizens were massacred by the early regime, and we allegedly showed that it was under the expression of former President Salih, that the hard partisan were massacred on the party headquarters of the CDC in here in Conca Town, based upon that they take this day upon every year to commemorate November 7th as the Mathias Day. So based upon that, this year commemoration will be done here, it is ongoing within District Number 15, Lucky Town to be precise, where this entire process is ongoing and they refer to this as the Mathias Day. So the Secretary General along with his interest, some stars of the party, has come to commemorate this day within Lucky Town. So lucky all the hills stand out, they are in the numbers as they come out to commemorate this day, and you can see the streets, the splosh and everything is going. As we are yet to hear the message for today, what would the message be, what would be that to be said by the Secretary General, we yet to hear from that. The Secretary General Jefferson Tamakoti is here, wearing the all over white, along with his white jacket, black hat, so that's the message. So as we can see, they see the parade of the descent of the Secretary General of the CDC, of the CDC, the CDC, and his interest along with residents of Lucky Town community, as he has come to commemorate what they refer to as the Mathias Day, as you may remember, where November 7th, 2011, some citizens were massacred by the early regime, and we allegedly showed that it was under the expression of former President Salih, that the hard partisan were massacred on the party headquarters of the CDC in here in Conca Town, based upon